Welcome to the Board of Commissioners work session on county compensations. So I guess we're gonna start this off with the dynamic duo of Sean and Mike. Y'all gonna be guys a little presentation on everything, so we'll get started with that.
Thank you, Chair.
Is this one on? Can you?
No, it's not on.
Is this one on?
No.
There we go.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner, so what we're gonna be discussing this evening is obviously the compensation study that we put forth with Condry, what, three months ago down there?
February tomorrow, yes.
So Condry, we have some of their representatives online here. We're gonna give them the opportunity to go through how they completed the study, what that process looked like, and then from there, we're gonna go into what kind of impacts this would have on the upcoming fiscal year budget. So I'm gonna turn to Dr. Condry in his.
All right, thanks, Mike. We're glad to be here this evening, and I'm joined by Jan Hasford, my business partner, and also Greg Reese, who's our principal consultant. We have about a five or 10-minute PowerPoint presentation, not too lengthy. We're gonna take you through the steps of the plan and then also talk about some several different options for funding of the plan. I will say it was a pleasure to speak with your employees. You've got a group of employees, and this plan is going to do nothing but help you retain them and also attract employees to the county. So Greg, I'm gonna let you take the lead with the first two or three slides, if you will.
Sure, it's good to be with everybody this afternoon, and I hope the PowerPoint is visible for everybody. First thing I wanna do.
PowerPoint, I don't have to share it again.
Okay, let's see if we can do that, then. Hold on. My apologies.
The Commissioners do have a copy of your PowerPoint, too.
There you go. Okay.
Blow that up if you can.
Here we go. Okay, I hope it's working now for everybody.
I don't think, but that's okay.
Yeah, as long as everybody in the room there can see it.
Back to the bottom.
So the first thing I wanna do is talk a little bit about the objectives of the study. We were asked to review and upgrade the current classification system and pay plan for all county employees, and we were asked to collect salary survey data so that we could produce a recommended pay plan based on job analysis, job evaluation, and the wage survey data that we collected. The steps involved in achieving these objectives were pretty straightforward. We distributed position questionnaires and asked that those be completed by all of your personnel, and everybody did a wonderful job with those. Once we received those back, we then followed up with an interview of your county employees. We talked to at least 50% and one incumbent from every position. And then once we had gathered all of that information through the questionnaires and the employee interviews, we conducted internal analysis of the jobs, and then, of course, we went out and conducted the salary survey so that we could conduct external analysis of the jobs. The participants in our salary survey, of which we were very pleased to say we got over 90% response rate, and this, I think, is found on page three in your report, if you have that in front of you. But the salary survey participants included Bullock County, Chatham County, Glen County, Liberty County, Tift County, the city of Hinesville, the city of Kingsland, the city of St. Mary's, and the city of Statesboro, and then in Florida, Nassau County.
All right, thanks, Greg. If you turn to the next slide, this is Plan A, Table A, and it's also, if you look in your report, it's page six, it's Table 2A. This is the plan after we looked internally and then externally. That is what we say is 100% of the market. It's at the mean of the market. And to give you an example of how it would impact salaries, let's look at grade 16. This is the grade for an entry-level deputy sheriff. And Jan, if we had a sheriff's deputy that was making $37,000, what would happen to that person upon implementation of this plan?
They would start at grade 16, Step A, which is $43,522.87.
And if they made 44, making 44,000, where would we slot them?
At Step B, a grade 16, Step B, which is $44,610.95.
So everybody had moved up at least to the minimum, or if they were between a step, we move them to the next highest step. Now, Greg, can you go to the next slide, which is Table B? As we'll see in a minute, Table A, the 100% of the market was a bit, it's a bit pricey. And normally, we'll show you a plan that's maybe 105% of the market, a little bit higher. In this case, we thought it was best to show you one that was a little bit less, just very slightly under the mean of the market. It's 97% of the market. And Jan, that same deputy making 37,000, what do they make on Plan B?
Grade 16, Step A, which is $42,217.19.
And then again, if you had one making above that, that'd be slotted into the nearest step, just like the one on Table A. So if we go to the next slide, Greg, and this in your report is also Table 3 on page 9. The left-side column shows how much it took to put everybody on stepping grades in the new plan. So how much for Plan A, Jan?
Okay, $1,418,863, which is 9.24% of your current payroll.
Okay, and that's the plan that's 100% of the market. The one that's just a little bit less than that, the 97%, what does that cost, Jan?
$1,112,618, which is 7.24% of payroll.
And if you notice, when we're talking about, we use the deputy sheriff. We had moved, let's say, that deputy on that first example that was making 37,000 had been in the county one year, or the one making 44,000 had been there 10 years. We have really compressed their salaries because of this new plan, because we're conservative in how we implement it. So what we need to do is an equity adjustment to move your employees out into the scale based on their length of service to the county. And the equity adjustment, we have two that we have outlined in Table 3, and it's also in the footnotes to Table 3, you'll see it. But if an employee had one to three-year years of service, we move them out one step, four to six years of service, two steps, and seven or more years of service, three steps. Now, that's on the full plan. On the modified plan, all we did was take out the option for a third step, and so one to three years of service, the employee would move out one step, and four or more years of service that move out, too. What's the cost of that, Jan? And then let's go down the relative cost of each plan.
Okay, so Plan A, the full 100% plan, is $773,128, which is 4.61% of your payroll. The full Plan B, which is 97% of the market, is $758,344, or 4.60% of payroll. Now, the Plan A modified, the cost is $594,577, which is 3.54% of payroll. And Plan B modified, which the modified is only two steps maximum, is $585,144, or 3.55% of payroll.
And considering all of these, we wanna make an impact to the salary structure, but we also wanna treat your employees correctly that have been with you for a number of years. And so we think the best plan for you to consider is the full Plan B, and what's the total cost of that, Jan?
It's $1,870,962.
So what this does is puts you just about at the mean of the market and moves people out into the pay scale, so you do not have employees grouped tightly together regardless of length of service. So that's the plan we're gonna put forward for your consideration. I'll open it up for questions, or I know Mike has some things to implement or to present, but this is the kind of the end of our PowerPoint.
I got a question.
Please.
Yes, sir.
All right, steps. You're talking about these modified Plan A, modified Plan B. You limit the steps, you know, when you're making the equity adjustment.
Yes, sir.
Is that the grade A, B, C, D, E, Q, R? Is that, there's six steps, in other words?
Well, if you look actually in the report, there are 18 steps. We couldn't put 18 steps on the PowerPoint.
So gentlemen, if y'all look at the very last page of the entire white folder that you have, very last page, that's the pay grade scale for the Plan B option, which is what we've got in the books for you. So you can see there's 28 grades. I didn't bring my glasses, and they go through Step R, which is what, 1, 2, 3, 4?
18.
18 steps would be classified as potentially grade 16, Step B, C, D, whatever those, that's your classification.
That's right.
Okay.
So that deputy that was making 37,000, they would be brought to Step A, and then they would move out one additional step if they'd been there one to three years, two additional steps, four to six, or three additional steps if they'd been several more years. So that would be on Step B if they had been there seven years or more.
All right, looking at the Step ABC, how do we go, you know, Step A is what, one to three years? Is that what you're saying?
No, now, no. The steps, the 18 steps, every year, you'll have the opportunity, employees will have the opportunity to move through those. So that'll just be normally just a step regardless of service every year. But this year, because we've implemented a new plan, you're going to move people out based on their length of service. And so one to three years, one step, and that might not be Step A. That might be Step C or D, depending on where they landed in the paper. And Jan, can you take over and maybe explain it better?
It basically, it depends on what they're currently making. If the employee is making more than Step A, then they would go out to the closest step above what they're currently making to be put into the plan, and then they would move the equity adjustment. As Steve said, if they had another one to three years of service, they would move one additional step.
All right, let me ask you this. When I'm looking at the grades, 1 through 28, what puts you in that category? When you're looking at, where do you start with in this matrix?
We are looking at the responsibilities of the job. We have a point factor system that we've used to evaluate them, and we're also looking at the salary survey. So we're looking at two things.
Okay, so grades 1 through 28 are not, is not necessarily a correlation to number of years of service.
Oh, not at all. It's a responsibility of the position. And Jan, what's the lowest graded position we have?
Well.
Seven, but it could be, hang on just a second. It looks like it's a 10, Steve.
Okay, so they're really only, the bottom grades are not used because you don't have a lot of seasonal. If you had a recreation apartment or something of that nature with a lot of seasonal employees, you'd use some of those grades.
Okay. All right. The reason I'm getting with Mike here later is implementation and everybody understand moving forward. You know, assuming we decide which one of these we go with, moving forward, so everyone, including the department heads, gotta know where, what to expect.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you understand how the grades and step move forward, and I'm sure that within these, if we're starting off, like he said, on grade, what was it, 16? Is that the one we were talking about?
Yes, sir. We're talking about the deputy sheriff at 16.
All right, so 16 is grade A. We start off at 42,217. Now, going to B, C, D, F, and moving on to that, that could be merit-based, that could be experience, that could be various factors to go.
That's right. This year, it's based on length of service. Next year, it would be based on merit.
All right, so I mean, I understand. We gotta, we gotta pick a starting point, and we're gonna base it on that.
Yes, sir. You've got to adjust that scale. You'll notice that when we move that scale down 3%, it costs you 2% less. So you've got a lot of people that are grouped right at the start of the pay scale, and you need this equity adjustment to move them out. That's why we're recommending the three-step equity adjustment and the plan that's a little bit lower than the mean.
No, we understand the equity part, at least I think I do.
Uh huh.
Which could be the scary part, but I think I do. So we're looking at, we're looking at the Plan B with a equity adjustment of roughly saying, well, 4.6 versus 4.61, it's kinda, you know, immaterial difference there. The equity adjustment is more for the ones that have been here longer and.
That's absolutely right. These plans tend, for the people that are below the minimum, those are your newer employees. So if you only did the classification changes, it would not, it would not be a wise thing to do, because you need to take care of the people that have been working with you for a long time.
Right. You classification jump ahead of somebody based on what you're, that's what the equity adjustment's about.
That's right. It's to keep everybody spread out a bit as best that we can, and you need to do both of these at the same time. You should not do one in July and the other part in January. You have to do them both at the exact same time.
So. Yeah, yeah, no, you couldn't. I agree that it would be very unwise to try to stagger.
It is. It is. Yeah, we've been bit up a few times, haven't we, Jan? We not.
Absolutely.
That would just create more issues.
It would create, you could, you could pay people money and make them mad.
And Chairman, I wanna point out also that that pay grade 16 that we're talking about for a deputy sheriff, that is for, you know, a certified deputy sheriff that has, doesn't have rank, you know, there's different pay grades for all of those different levels, you know, like a sergeant starts at a pay grade 20, you know, and, you know, obviously lieutenant's at 21, captain's at 22. In other words, you're moving up that step if you have the same title and the same responsibilities. If you are given a new rank, as these gentlemen and ladies, you know, get more responsibility, they get more, that's correct. They get more than just one step for that. There's.
Next question, and then implementing that is, you know, I'm sure you understand how the county, how county system works. We have constitution officers.
Yes, sir.
The Board of Commissioners does not have that many employees in and of itself, and I wanna make sure that, like the Sheriff's Department, you know, we don't set, we don't hire the deputies, we don't set their pay. You know, this just has something, has to be worked in conjunction where they know and understand the step process and how it works and how to implement it. It has to be like a coordinated thing.
And Jan is willing to work with the sheriff along with Mike to go over all of this.
Right.
Assuming sheriff is willing to work with us, right?
Well, he was cooperative during the interview process.
Sheriff Greenwood?
Yes, the sheriff was very cooperative.
He can be. Jan, Dr. Condry, I want you to take a second to talk about how our neighbor to the north is an extreme outlier with the rates of pay that they're starting with specifically for their law enforcement.
Glen County was number one out of all of the organizations surveyed. They were number one for, I think, for two levels, for the deputy and for the sergeant, and when you got into lieutenant and captain and chief deputy, they were not.
I just wanted to point out that, you know, Glen County is starting their deputies higher than Chatham County is in Savannah. So they just recently went through a five and a half million dollar, you know, pay increase. So they're, they are an outlier compared to everybody else around us. I just wanted to point that out.
If you give me another 1.5 million, I can get.
Glen County, Woodchapel.
Yes, yes. Sure.
I get that.
Mr. Chairman, if you give us another 1.5 million, we can put you right with them. That's a joke.
He said if you give us 5 million, he can put us right with them.
I heard it.
Yeah.
I was using huh as a stall technique.
Oh.
Yeah, well, it's not me giving it to you, that we would start having crowded meetings right after that.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah. But what I will say is this plan doesn't make you the highest in the market, but if somebody wants to work for Camden County, they can come, they can be paid fairly, and they'll be treated fairly as they move up through the ranks.
Well, we don't always have, you know, we've got the native base over here that's, you know, we say there's somewhat competition, but they're, you know, it's a much smaller environment, but we just need to be fair and equitable so that we can hire the deputies and we can retain them. That's the whole, that's the whole purpose of this, and you know, I can certainly differentiate between Glen and Camden and Chatham. I lived there, too, for 10 years. Okay, so what else?
Also, Jan, I wanted to point out also that the incremental steps, you know, A, B, C, D, that's a 2.5% increase. Each step is a 2.5% increase over the next.
Okay.
So that's important information. You know, the last couple of years, we have based the performance evaluation systems. If you met expectations or exceeded expectations, you would have a 2% increase. This one would represent a 2.5. If that's what you chose to do, I just wanted to point out that that's what the steps represent. They're 2.5% higher each step.
All right, tell me, why are we using 2.5, just out of curiosity?
Well, the whole, the whole scale is based on 2.5% increments. The steps are 5%, but they're really 5.0125% between each one. If you look in your report, you will see that the steps, so you can actually draw a diagonal along it to see that they're repeating steps. So it's for ease of administration.
Okay, that's clear, Smud.
So, you know, the 2.5% increase would keep us from being in the same situation five years from now, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
That's what I was expecting.
Yes, sir, where we don't end up skewed, where we're, you know, we're not paying them properly in a couple of years. We wanna, we wanna get on the wave, we wanna get on the step and stay on it, if that makes sense.
Trevor, I wish you turned your phone off. Can you believe that? No, and I understand that. We don't wanna start this, and then three or four years down the road, there were 2, 3, 4, and then, you know.
That's correct.
Which I get, which is what I was expecting here. That's the whole purpose of this. And, you know, obviously, when you're, when you're doing evals in the Sheriff's Department, when they're doing their evals, there's judgment in there, subjectivity as well, I would imagine. Don't know. I know, I know, just like we talked about, you got a 2%, and assuming you meet certain criteria, and you do this, that, the other. So this is, you know, it's kind of a, it's here as long as everybody's performing.
That's right.
Yeah, the scales are laid out to keep us from sliding, sliding into the hole again. What else?
Does the board have any other questions, Condry and their staff?
I mean, the 2.5, that's to keep up with inflation, is it not?
Yeah.
That's assuming a normal inflation market.
Trying to stay competitive with the market and inflation and.
Every year, every year, you need to raise that scale, and you need to give a merit increase. So you've got two separate components you're looking at. If you don't, if the only thing you do is give a merit increase, the 2.5% don't move the scale, you're not gonna be competitive in the market, you know, in the next couple, three years.
Elaborate on that just a little bit for me.
So you've gotta keep the scale current, and so to do that, you need to look at the employment cost index. We mentioned this in the report, and every year, try to use that to raise that scale 0.75 to 100% of the employment cost index. So every salary moves up, that whole scale moves up. Let's say if it's gonna be 2%, the whole scale moves up 2%, and then if people earned a step increase, they would also get that.
All right, just kinda going in the weeds, just take an example. Let's go back to step 16. Right, where we got a new person, 42,217.
That's right.
Next year, what are we looking at?
Looking at, after, if that person gets a merit increase, they move to Step B, and if the county raises the scale, it could be 2, 3, or 4% higher than that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand is, how does this scale, you talking about the whole scale?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Jan, I want you to take over.
Yeah, it's, so if you move that entire scale up 3%, grade 16, Step A, would be $43,484.44 instead of the 42,217.19. You're gonna move every, every step, and for every grade, it's gonna move up 3%.
All right, hang on just one second. Let me, let me, you know, 'cause I'm very simple. So what we're looking at, this scale we're starting with is the starting point. So you're setting that, you know, we've got the steps. Are we calling it steps, grades, or I'm getting a little, what are we doing with A, B, C versus 1, 2, 3? Which one's staying? What's the differentiation?
1, 2, 3 is grades, A, B, C is steps.
All right, got you. Now, with that being said, with that being said, next year, we take this whole scale and we say, well, what Commissioner Reddick was talking about, do we look at a constant limit, say, well, we need to bump the whole scale by 1, 2, 3%, whatever? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Is that where you're showing like the number on the 2% increase at each?
No. No, I think, you talking about, that's the equity adjustment? No.
The merit increase, would that be like going from a 16 to a 17?
Would be going from a 16A to a 16B.
Okay.
So the insinuation, if I may, is that periodically, the starting point has to be adjusted by a certain percentage. Now, does that happen?
The whole scale.
That's correct.
Say, look, we're gonna adjust the whole scale by 2, 3%, whatever it is.
That's correct, and understanding that that is very difficult to attain, you know, 'cause you're compounding interest and all those types of things at this point. I know you understand that very well.
We understand that. That's what I'm saying. We gotta, I don't wanna set us up to fail miserably.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, going between the step, 2 and 1/2%, so if we look at someone who gets moved to step, in conjunction, we change the scale by whatever percent of inflation rate, or what are we gonna call it, I guess? It could be a 5%.
If you move the scale 2 and 1/2%, and gave them a step, it'd be 5%.
That's, that's my point. Uh? Yeah. It's, it's not the 5.16. That was the equity thing. This is once, this would be next year. So, year budget 24, you sit here looking at, and, you know, you do the evals or whatever you do, and, you know, we've got to make a determination on what kind of scale adjustment we go with. You know, like Mike stated, you know, if step A is the beginning point, obviously, it can't stay stagnant. So, you can't change just A, you got to change the whole scale.
Dr. Condray, how often do you and your team kind of see a scale needing to be increased by percentage line?
Once a year. Every year.
Every year, okay. Is that typically by 2, 3? I mean, what percentages are you going to say?
Normally, you know, Mike, it's been, it's been, you know, 2% or 3%. But, you know, this year, it's 4% and 5% with a lot of our clients because the inflation is so high and the employment cost index is so high. But normally, 2% or 3%. This year is really an exception.
Okay. So, I'm just saying, we've got a baked-in formula here at anywhere from 2.5% to 5% roughly payroll county-wide increase each year. And I don't know what we've been running. I have not looked at the numbers, total salary numbers each year to see how much we're in. Because it's kind of difficult to do that when you change, when employees come and go, it's hard to.
Yeah, I think based off of current, current budget positions, you know, over the course of five years, we would need over $10 million more additional to cover.
Say that again?
Off of current budgeted positions, we would, over the course of five years, including the 2.5% increase in each step, like if an employee moved a new step each year based off of merit, and that's not even including the, that's not including the full-scale adjustment. That's just moving one step up. We need $10 million, that's minimum.
Well, that takes me back to the thing.
That's the compounding interest.
Well, we understand. That takes me back to the point I've been making about the digest, you know, to get $10 million right now, you're looking at...
Several millions.
We're just talking about 2 million, right, per year?
Oh, I know, but our, our, our budget requirements, you know, we're going to increment. So, we would need, at the end of that 10 years, we'd have additional.
And that's just salaries and benefits. That's not operational or any other fixed costs or associated costs with the operating budget.
Be about six meals.
Again, that's over the course of five years, but this is something we have to evaluate each year.
Yeah.
So...
There's nothing that's automatic about it, so you get to make the decision every year, if that makes sense.
You got what?
There's nothing that's automatic about this. Yeah, people don't automatically move a step, or you don't automatically have to raise the scale. So, you get to make a decision every year as to how much you're going to move the scale, and if you're going to fund step increases or merit increases.
Well, I understand, but, you know, that's, that's the thing you get into. Not 1, well, 1.5 in it, and then 1.5 a meal? I'm sorry?
1.4.
Thereabouts. So, it's well over six meals to get to 10 million extra. And like you said, I realize that's over a 10-year period.
That's, you know, perfect world.
But we go back.
Case scenario.
If we backed up 10 years from now, what was our millage rate? It was around 14. So, our millage rate has not climbed, you know, like that.
It's, it's just like a fluid, you know, body with your digest.
That's right.
I agree. I'm just, I just want to point out, you know, obviously, these are things that we need, we need to look at. We also need to be cognizant of maintaining this.
That's right. It seems that it would have to be looked at every year, obviously, to see what could be done. If you remember when we implemented the performance evaluation, we talked about, you know, a 2% increase that year, and then when we went to do the budget cycle for the next year, it would be determined essentially what we could do. There may be a year where we couldn't give an increase at all, or there might be a year where we could do a little better. I think it would be just this, just annually, you'd have to look at it and say, can we slide the whole scale?
Even if we don't slide the scale, there are people that will be moving up in steps and grades just from promotions or responsibility changes and dial. So, we're going to have that at least one step, 2.5% baked in, a lot of them. Now, you know, you get somebody that's in the grade 16, step A, and that's a first-year person. Next year, they don't automatically go to step B, I presume.
That's correct.
Okay.
If they perform, if they meet expectations, they would move to the next step.
I'm just saying, yes, I agree. And I'm just saying that, you know, we have no control over that, or limited control.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm just wanting to point out to, you know, the folks with their payrolls, Sheriff's Office, the other constitutional officers, that they got to be, we got to be judicious in working these things so that we can maintain it. And we got to coordinate our efforts, because we're going to try to make this fair and equitable for everybody and reasonable. It takes that, it's going to take that moving forward, you know, to maintain this thing. And hopefully, you can. You got to set a goal, and you got to set a plan. And, you know, like I said, we've long recognized that we're, it's my understanding, I think Nancy told me that in these adjustments, that the Sheriff's Department was the most underpaid department by about 40, they're 47, 48% of these increase. Is that still correct?
Yes.
Pretty close to that.
Which underscores what we got to understand.
The survey did reveal what we expected it to reveal, and that, you know, public safety was where the greatest increases need to, needed to go. They didn't look at all employees that are paid, you know, through the Board of County Commissioners payroll system, but the, that, you know, was 40-something percent of that overall number that is actually, you know, higher than the number that's projected there. That, that total number there for Plan B, and we're going to talk about this a little bit more here, but that number does not include vacant positions, it doesn't include FICA. There's some things that we've added into that, that we have some more accurate numbers of what that would be.
But the 1.8 doesn't include payroll taxes or benefits.
That's correct.
Does not include any of that.
Okay. That's a big difference.
That's, that's what we're going to go into in our presentation.
Well, we're going, you could tack on another. Yeah, I'm not going to.
That's a lot more.
Yes, but I got my idea.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know if we have any more questions for these guys unless they got more to share.
Jan, Dr. Condray, anything else that you all would like to share here?
Anybody have questions for the consultants?
Thank you, Benny.
Well, just thank you all, and it's been a pleasure working with you. And we will stick with you, you know, to help implement this plan and to make sure it's implemented correctly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Commissioners, you should have the next PowerPoint in front of you there. That salary work session.
Right.
Okay. I'll wait until I get this queued up here. And I understand that what we're going to be talking about is really based on this upcoming fiscal year budget. So, what we have done is finances, go ahead and put in all of the salary survey results into the proposed budget. Again, this is a working document, so please understand that these numbers can easily change. We, this is kind of based off of the...
We want to reflect what we're doing now, that's what we're looking at. But it's also including the benefits in the, in the budget. It's got the...
Includes benefits, overtime, part-time, all that.
Okay.
Everything.
And does it also include the unfilled funded positions?
It does.
It does.
Okay.
It includes everything.
So, I mean, the reason, well, I'm looking at the man over there, and he's sitting there with six or seven positions, various departments are unfilled. Him filling those positions would not be an alteration to his, the budget upcoming, is what I'm saying.
Correct. And this also, and we'll go through this, you'll see this as we go through, but this also does include all of the position requests that the county receives. So, what we're going to be covering here is just salaries and benefits. There are a few budget assumptions that we will make within this, and a lot of these came out of the Budget Committee meetings. We are going to have another work session after this to talk about the budget in greater detail as far as operational.
The other items.
The other items that this, tonight, we're just focusing on salaries and benefits and the positions that were requested and how it impacts the upcoming fiscal year budget. So, whenever we first started out, after all of the recommendations or all the requests, if I can get this thing to work, the battery down.
Can you all move it manually?
Oh, there it goes. Now it's working. So, we received over $41, $41.7 million in requested expenses, and then our projected revenue at $38.5 million. What we needed to balance the budgets, based on those initial requests and revenue projections, was $3.169 million. So, that was before the Budget Committee meetings kicked off. After the Budget Committee meetings kicked off, this is where we're at now. And again, this does include all of the Condray recommendations from Plan B on salary adjustments, including the equity adjustments that they recommended.
But this only includes the Plan B, it doesn't include the other request items, the requests, non-salary requested items in budget.
It does, we do have some of those, and we'll go through those just to kind of give a broad picture of where we're at right now.
And just for those involved, just for those here, the projected revenues come, come from our projected digest and our current millage rate.
That's right.
That's what is, you know, obviously, what we're trying to tie to, trying to...
So, the digest did grow some, and our lost revenue has kicked up quite a bit. But what you see here are, what we need to be able to balance the budget now is a 1.35 million dollar either cuts or an increase in revenues. But the revenues, we've gone through pretty thoroughly. That number there is, is pretty much going to say where it's at. So, what we're looking at is 1.35 billion dollars in either cuts or...
Let's pause there for just one second. No, I'm going to keep, but I'm trying to get it in my head as well. This required to balance the budget, does that include, does that including the majority of the other budget request?
Correct. And we're, this is it right here. These are the other budget considerations. So, that's the next slide that you'll see in front of you. These are, a lot of these are those non-salary items, but we felt like we needed to just kind of show you what else is being considered now. Again, we will have another work session. So, where we cut from, that's up to the board whenever we move forward. These are non-salary lines here.
I've seen some cuts, but go ahead.
So, so you can, you can easily look at, look over these. You know, this is just for your information as far as where the Budget Committee meetings were held from. The next slide is all of the requested positions, and you'll see that bottom line there in additional new positions and what the funding would take. At these new positions, we have already adjusted those new pays, those new pay grades and the steps according to the salary survey that we received from Condray.
And it does include the already funded vacant positions and the FICA contributions. This is the total number.
This, this right here is just the new positions that were requested.
All right, that's, hold on a second. So, now, let me ask, let me go back just one time and belabor this, which is what I'm good at. Realize it, but I got to understand it. In these, in the 40,000, 40 million, the updated budget expenditure request.
This number here, the 40.42.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Click to the next screen.
That 1 million is included in that.
This is in there?
Yes.
So, this, the additional...
That 1.35 million that you see there, that 1 million of those new requested positions is in that.
Okay. All right, hold, hold you water right there. All right, just pause for a second. Let's kind of go to the meat of the coconut. So, we start right here, and we said, we're going to implement Plan B. We're going to implement that. We're looking at, to make the budget neutral, we're looking at a one meal increase. Y'all listening?
I didn't hear nothing you said.
Huh?
I didn't hear nothing you said.
Did you?
And we have that later on in the PowerPoint as well as...
I just want to, I mean, I, I mean, you know, this is what we're, this is what, this is what this is all about, on how, how we go. That's right. 1.4.
Right.
4. So, we just, it would be just a, we'll have a... $51,000, $50,000 for a party at one, at one meal. Yeah. Okay.
Any questions on this slide? So, the next slide, we wanted to kind of highlight some of the positions as far as where our current starting salary is compared to the Condray recommended salary. So, these right here are all of our, well, not all, but primarily the majority of where all of our vacancies consist of. So, with the Sheriff's Office, the Deputy Sheriff, you'll see right now, current starting salary. And this is based off of, you know, our current salaries that we, we see right now. It's 35,730, and Condray's recommending a 42217, which is almost a $6,500 increase in annual salary.
Sheriff, you see any of this? You seen this?
This is the first time I've seen it.
And?
Didn't say that we're underpaid the whole time?
I know, honey, but I didn't want to talk about it. Is this something we can work with, is what I'm, is we're trying to work this thing forward? See what we're spending, see what it's going to take. I mean, we're going, I mean, we're going to obviously work on it some more, but we just, this is where we talk about it. So... All right?
Of course, you'll see all of the other positions there, majority, I mean, we're seeing some, obviously, you know, it's a pretty wide variance on some of the public safety positions. Now, the Communications Officer, I do want to highlight that because the board did approve, you know, overall, to our increase for all those positions. So, that's why you see that.
That kind of got adjusted.
That's right. We adjusted that prior to the survey.
That place is a little more than $4,000.
I guess the only one that surprises me a little bit, even though, is would be the control, animal control person.
Yeah, that's correct. So, keep in mind that, that Condray's salary recommendations are based off of job responsibilities compared to other areas with like-sized populations and like-sized employee counts within those organizations.
I get it.
That's why you'll see, we did the increase for the Communications Officer, as Sean said, so that dialed them in a whole lot closer. We were just way out of whack with the Animal Control Officer.
On this scale without that... It would have been on this scale without that two dollars.
It would have, it would have been rough, a five thousand dollar increase because they worked the twelve-hour shifts, uh, so two dollars an hour at twenty-one, eighty-four hours a year, somewhere around forty-five hundred dollars, plus the additional five hundred seventy dollars there would have been about five thousand dollars. Uh, they would have been recommending about a five thousand dollar a year increase had we not done the two dollars earlier in the year or last fiscal year.
There's not a great deal of shock value here for those that we've been looking at it, but, and I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm kind of belaboring it because I want the public as much to see this number. This isn't, you know, this is documented now. It's not he said, she said.
Right.
Uh, and, and this is where we are, and I want everyone to understand in this budget process, how we go through and get this funded.
I want to point out again, the, the, all of these positions here are for zero experience folks, you know, if we bring.
These are new people.
That's correct. People that just became post-certified or, okay.
I get it. And, and then obviously, when you look at this, we're, you know, fifteen percent-ish.
Yes.
Overall.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about the percentages overall departmentally wise. We've, he's got some of those figures too, so.
But I mean, it's, it's kind of, that's more accounting boring stuff. I mean, you can get the picture here.
More data, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, you, you just get inundated with it. We get the bigger picture of what we're trying to do here. Uh, we're trying to, we're trying to attract people and we're trying to retain people.
That's right.
And that's the whole purpose of this. And we can't, we can't do something here just to attract new people without doing something to retain, i.e. the equity adjustment. Oh, this goes, okay, this goes on, public safety.
This is uh public works, solid waste, facility maintenance, public works and solid waste. Uh, those grades um are actually the same for uh equipment operators and heavy equipment operators. We just wanted to make sure solid waste was included within this.
Right.
So you'll see those differences there, uh, roughly about anywhere from four uh to five thousand dollars variance. Now, facilities maintenance tech, um, we've been starting those out pretty appropriately, so not a big adjustment there on uh that position.
Okay.
Any questions on this slide? So the next slide, this is the overall budget increase for the general funds. Um, this is strictly general fund only. So again, this is that, at the conjry number, which was at one point eight seven million.
That's just salary.
That's just salary. That's not.
Growth salary.
Yes, sir. That's correct. So whenever we add in overtime, FICA, retirement, leave so back, all that other stuff, all the part-timers and everything, uh, the total figure is three point uh five billion. And again, that three point five billion does include the million dollars worth of new position requests.
That's what I keep going back to your earlier scale here where.
If you back out a million.
We're one point, we're one point three four nine short.
Right.
But that encompasses this three, three billion five twenty-seven.
That's right.
And the unfunded, the, the unfilled funded positions.
Correct.
And the new.
Requested.
Request.
Correct. If you back out a million, the overall implementation just to the general fund is roughly two point five.
Okay.
Any questions on this slide? So the next slide, this is uh the budget increases for all public safety uh departments. So you'll see kind of the breakdown um there, and then you'll see the percentages uh of the increase.
So when I'm looking at this between the general fund and the uh public safety, the basically public safety is three million of the three million five.
And that's, again, that's also including those new position requests.
Yes, sir. Right, but that's still.
Right.
And, and I'm, and I'm emphasizing that for as much as public. Is this being broadcast?
Yes.
Oh, it is. That's, I want that understood, that, you know, vast majority of this, three million of the three million five hundred is public safety.
One thing I do want to point out is that uh EMS fire, so those of you, you understand that we do break out a percentage for the unincorporated district for uh just the fire fee, the fire service, as well as um not unincorporated, but on the nine one one, they have their own separate fund as well. So um as far as those two go, um, for the unincorporated tax for fire is an eighty-six thousand five hundred dollar increase. Um, and then for E nine one one is a hundred eighty, right at a hundred eighty-six thousand dollar increase. So that's, that's incorporated within the slide, though.
Say that again?
So we bring, we include nine one one and the, we call two seventy, which is the unincorporated tax district. Those increases are included in this figure. Just, just note that. I mean, they're bigger. This, that three million, uh, thirty-four thousand, but those are separate budgets. I mean, just separate funds, like the unincorporated tax.
Unincorporated, yeah.
And then the nine one one fund.
Correct.
Now, are, are we looking at a separate adjustment for the unincorporated area?
I think we're doing pretty well on our fund balance there. So, you know, whenever we do the.
Well, we're making all these adjustments as far as it goes, like the unincorporated fund, or we have investment on the unincorporated rate.
I don't know, I, I, I don't know that we're going to make it, have, need to make an adjustment based off of the salary side, but maybe the capital and operational side.
Okay.
We may need to take that into consideration.
But not, not what you're looking at as far as salaries.
No, sir.
Several years ago, we bought a, a fire truck or something.
Right.
Correct. We've got, we've got some other capital needs and we'll, we'll discuss the ARPA request, the capital request. You know, we're going to have to go into that in greater detail.
Well, I understand, but just like out of our. Go ahead.
Any, any other questions on this slide? So this is a um kind of a, a, a history overlook of how we have funded uh the sheriff's office, jail, nine one one and salaries. Um, what you'll see there is, is an eighty-eight percent increase from fiscal year twenty fourteen. And again, that green, uh, the yellow is our current year. Uh, that's, that's our projected number where we're going to pretty much finish out the year. And the green is the uh proposed fiscal year twenty-three. And again, that's including the um new salary survey. Uh, for the sheriff's office, that's uh right at a thirty percent increase from current fiscal year to upcoming fiscal year.
All right.
Any questions here?
Nope.
Uh, the next one is for EMS fire. Um, pretty much same understanding there over uh since fiscal year twenty fourteen. This current year to the uh upcoming fiscal year, that's a fourteen percent increase in salaries, benefits. And then, of course, from uh twenty fourteen to the upcoming fiscal year, it'd be a forty-nine. I think that's a forty-nine.
Yes, forty-nine. I can see far away, just can't see close.
So here is our, our final slide here. Um, we're, we're just, we're back to that one point three five million dollar figure. And then how would the board kind of, what direction would you like for us to go? As uh either budget reductions, a potential use of ARPA or fund balance, or potential mileage increase to assist in funding this. And now I will say, we are going to discuss other items, and I can always go back up to this other slide where uh we, we kind of talked about these other budget considerations here. Uh, so again, we've needed to do budget reductions.
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have another work session.
Yes, sir.
Let's focus in on that.
Right.
As, as far as I'm concerned at the moment, you know, we've, we've looked at the salaries, we understand the impacts, and we look at, we're, we understand the impact. If we change or cut nothing, you're looking at a meal. Uh, I think we need to go through the budget, the, the next budget thing, look at all these other items. Like I said, I see some things, and then, you know, maybe the other commissioners see some things too. I don't know. And then once we've done with that, then we'll know. We'll know whether to uh adjust the mileage rate or not, because I, I'm not looking at taking it out of fund balance, and I'm not looking at it taking it out of ARPA. Because, you know, this, that's a one-trick pony, you know. But we get here next year, and we got, we got to make up for last year and the current, and next year. So uh we just, you know, let's be realistic with it. So I would prefer, before we give you direction on whether we, before I do, the other guys can say what they do. Before I would say, gee, I want to go with a month, one meal or half a meal or whatever meal, let's look at the other items. You know, I think we've gone over the uh, uh, the salary stuff. And, you know, it's, it's not to say that, you know, maybe we can, and we can still look at other positions. We got a million dollars tied up in other positions. There may be some, some trimming that we could work together on there, uh, which I'm sure. So let's, let's uh.
Correct.
The largest ones, you know, back to, go to your uh.
We'll go to the.
Pigeon increase, uh. You know, I think this is where, there it is. I mean, I think it's clear where it is. I think if you start there, the fi- by far, the vast majority, the, you know, seventy percent of that is with the sheriff's department, and that's the new positions. That's thumbnail math, but.
You're really, you were pretty close.
I think in our next budget, I think we need to sit down with the sheriff's department and see how we can tweak everything and make all this work for all of us. You know, uh, we're putting him in a better position to fund or to fill his unfilled funded positions, which should help as well. And so let's just see what we can work from there. And maybe we can get this thing closer to budget neutral or mileage rate neutral and everybody happy. So I think if, you know, the sheriff sit down with us, uh, and, and his folks, and see what we can do there. We'll look at the other items on the budget that we're not working on today, see what we can do there, and see uh, see where we end up. I see we're pretty close on a lot of things here, where, we've got it uh nailed down pretty tight, I believe.
So before I move on to just making the next steps as far as scheduling, does any of the other commissioners have any other questions about kind of where we stand, where we're at? Um, what we need to do? Um, any questions regarding the salary survey itself, positions?
Well, I look at it, if we can increase the salaries so that we can attract more people, that will lower the amount of.
Correct. That's, that's the movement.
And we have it, we have it. You've done those projections based on that, have you? But we know what overtime is.
We do.
That's right.
Well, unscheduled overtime, let's be sure we keep the semantics here.
Correct.
And so obviously, there can be some benefits from there in, in, in the sheriff's office as well as uh our fire departments. But they, they both share those issues. So, and, and maybe we'll get some benefits there. Uh, maybe we can try to see what that is, but, you know, right now, let's work on what we got. Anyway, uh, I know I've been talking, but, you know, none of you guys are factual, so don't act like you are. So if anybody got anything to say? I'm just, this is why y'all can make fun of me for talking, but I get it.
Again, I, I, I do want to just kind of go back to, again, this is a working document. You know, these are estimates. So I mean, these are, some of these are hard figures as far as like the budget considerations go, but for the majority of this, this is, it's a fluid working document right now.
Well, if it's off fifty dollars, I'm going to blame you anyway, so.
Thanks. I'll take it. If it's only, if it's only all fifty, that's pretty good.
All right. I'm going to keep it tight.
I, I think it is important to go through the budget process and, and see, you know, maybe some of the other budget items we can trim down. And I will say, I think, I think we got the greatest county in Georgia, so I'm, I'm a fan of Plan A at a hundred percent. But, you know, Plan B would be a good step in the right direction. Um, you know, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of Plan A or B in, in these new positions because I think these are essential, you know, uh, with, with trying to keep some of our other overhead costs standing on. For, you know, like ten jellers, you know, I think we're having to, to house prisoners, you know, in Glen County, and that's an expense too. So just making sure that we're looking comprehensively at the entire picture instead of just one side of it.
Correct.
I wanted to point out right from the very beginning, we didn't really talk about this, what he was talking about, you know, a hundred percent of the mean and ninety-seven percent of the mean. Uh, what, what Dr. Contri is talking about there is if we had twenty employers, if we were at a hundred percent uh employers, we would have ten that were above us and ten that were below us. And at ninety-seven, if there's twenty employers and uh our pay scale, there would be eleven above us and nine below us. So, you know, you want a hundred percent is right there in the middle uh in the ninety-seven, you know, it's just the next step down to the mean of the, you know, you could use ten or twenty. I just wanted to make sure that that was understood.
That's where we, we're just trying to be competitive.
Absolutely.
For our departments, so.
Want to be competitive, want to give them what they deserve.
You know, if, if, if the sheriff or, uh, say with the fire departments, you hire a first-year person, and, you know, they're starting off at uh, this uh, I think, what was it? You had them, I don't know, let me go back to this thing, real thing. Got me.
Sure, slide there.
Our current start salary as a deputy is thirty-five thousand. Sheriff gets him, gets him post-certified a year down the road. You know, they're, they're nowhere near close to the forty-two new starting salary. Somebody across the river or up the road, you know, will pick them up for even less than what we're starting at a new salary for. And they'll leave for a couple thousand.
Right.
And that's, and, you know, when you doing that, when you're retaining folks like that, your training costs are less. Uh, hopefully margin errors go down.
I also want to point out that uh Glen County increased their um health insurance premiums on their employees by twelve percent, uh, and we did zero. So that factors in too.
Big difference.
Have a boy, my.
Big difference, sure.
I give it to you.
Absolutely. It is. It is. There's a whole lot of things that factor into that is the point. I know you know that.
I don't, I don't compare us to Glen County.
Sure.
Anything. I have no desire to. I'd rather be here. Uh?
Brian, they're recording here too.
Yeah, they probably have it there here.
This one is a club or a club or?
Who?
Are with them?
Who? We're in the mix with them.
Yeah. We probably have asked about the Congress exactly where we would fall within them, but.
That would be one that's saying he got, they're doing. He would have to dig deeper into weeds to find out where fact married.
I don't think it is, uh.
Are they above us or below us or with us?
Right. I can get it though.
I mean, or.
Yes.
And like, they did take into, you know, just that specific scenario as an example. There's, there's certain responsibilities that deputies do that police officers don't do. Uh, so they, they weighed all that in.
Hundred percent. Yes, sir.
They interviewed, they interviewed fifty percent of all of our uh staff and.
This is job, job responsibility description specific. It isn't just.
They went through every single job duty of every single job title, which was really uh involved and thorough. And then not only did they do a um, a questionnaire for every single one of them, every single employee that we have. We did have a couple where you had multiples with the same job, job title that we allow up to five of them to submit one survey together. Uh, but they interviewed fifty percent of our employees. So, I mean, two hundred and fifteen uh people, they actually interviewed individually. So uh the data is, is thorough uh as far as what the responsibilities are and how they're compared uh to those other areas around us. So the, you know, I think the answer to the question is yes, there's a, there's an understanding that, you know, um, deputy here, you know, may have more responsibility than, you know, a Glen County deputies as they have a Glen County police force and all those types of things. So that's all taken into consideration. Yes, sir.
I think, how many studies of this Congress associate? No, I think you said that's something about over five hundred.
Yes.
Over five hundred.
But they've done it before.
Yes, sir.
And they, they've done some stuff, some stuff outside of Georgia, but ninety-five percent of it has been in Georgia. And I, I think we talked about before, Dr. Contri was the uh, uh, director of the University of Georgia, Carl Vincent Institute for Government for years before um he went blind.
He actually did one for Camden County.
Yes, that's correct.
Then.
Yeah.
Doctor Contri did.
Yes, sir.
Well, at the University of Georgia, do you can go any further? Anybody going to argue against the dogs?
No.
All right.
As, as far as next steps, uh, would, would we like to, because we're, we're really crunch time as far as when we got to send out notices uh to the newspapers for when we're going to have our first public hearing, when the budget is released to the public.
All right, let's, 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 we need to have our next budget step.
Right. Uh, uh, I mean, would you like to do another work session where we talk about the general?
Yes.
Could we do that maybe next Tuesday? Could we do that maybe next Tuesday? Is everybody, is everybody okay with that? We got our, we got Citizens Academy tomorrow. I mean, if the board, it, it's.
Uh, Tuesday's good.
Tuesday's okay?
Yeah. Tuesday.
What time? Five, six? Uh, probably, probably.
Are we gonna do it in this environment or are we gonna do it budget?
I would probably say this environment.
Fine. Uh.
Five?
Tuesday it is, guys. Everybody happy with Tuesday at five o'clock?
Tuesday at five.
Tuesday is election day.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you know. Probably, probably need to get it done Tuesday while I'm still here.
But.
Uh? What? What am I, what am I gonna be doing?
I mean, we can do it Wednesday. It, it's, you know, we just gotta, we're gonna have to make some decisions. So we can, yeah.
Y'all rather do it Wednesday?
You'll be able to get some sleep Tuesday night.
I sleep back with that maybe every night, so.
You gonna be campaigning Monday night?
Probably not.
I didn't either, dear. It is what it is.
Uh, it is hard to campaign when you're tied up in two to three meetings a day with the county. And then trying to keep my life from what she be at my office, so.
So it'll be Wednesday at the twenty minute six o'clock?
Five.
Five.
Gives us some good time to work with each other.
Alright, is there anything else that we uh need to hit on today?
That's it. That's all we have for you.
That's it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.